Yeah, I think, uh, from, you know, I would prefer not to include that simply because we are going to do the next residential section. So, really, to, right now, to add that would make no difference.
And that's that Pleasant Street Historical District, and there and go up.
Yeah, the proposal in the future would be to add a residential, uh, historical overlay over that.
Well, we do have a historical district in that area. It's called Pleasant Streets Historical District.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, it, we do have a historic district.
Recognized nationally, yes, ma'am, but we don't have an overlay for just yet.
Right, okay.
Yeah. So, that was, that was my thinking, but I think when we initially discussed this, that was going to be left out, and maybe that was the reasoning behind it, because, uh, we do have a national recognized.
Well, yeah, and the reason behind it was because we were trying to avoid putting as many-
Residential homes in there.
Residential as we could in there.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
But, uh, that is section one, uh, and it's identified here. This is your section one. That's only the entire overlay there. And then we'll move on to section two, unless there are any additional questions there. Section two is gonna be just opposite from where we were at, just being section one. So, section two would include all the way up here to 202 South Main, um, down to the corner of Bluegrass, uh, down to Olive, and then these two are residential homes. They were left out. All the way down to Jordan, back up as you see it. Um, that were all, that was the list of properties. We do have several residential homes in this section, um, uh, you know, most of these on Jordan, they're gonna be residential. Then you got a couple here on Olive, um, and then you got two over here. Uh, one over here that's residential, uh, being this one right here. So, in, in section two, we've actually got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight residential homes in that section.
I hate to do, I, I'm just concerned that it looks like we're spot doing it, to leave those two out and that other one. I mean, I understand why you did that and what we talked about doing that, but... Seems like what, it almost could seem to someone, and I'm not saying that that's what we did, that we were picking and choosing which houses we wanted to put in there.
I understand.
That's my, that's my only concern. I don't know, how does the rest of the board feel about that?
I sat through a meeting here, the council, there, somebody wanted to rezone a building. That was, you know, commercial, they wanted to go through it, and they have a, having a residential.
Uh-huh.
And they said, "No, 'cause of the, same thing on the roof, this is spot zoning, which you can't do."
Which you can't do. You can't, this, that zoning, that's illegal. You can't do it.
Right.
You have, you have more discretion on the historic side of things.
Yeah.
Right, but if we go ahead and just come down the street, and just say, "We just picked that one off," I, I agree with Donna, that it's, it, it looks clean.
Are the houses, I mean, is there any difference in, um, the year the houses were built, or do you know?
Yeah, so let's look at, uh-
Up in two, newer homes.
Up here?
Two in that block that's blocked out.
Two in the block are, are newer homes, yeah. Okay, so, uh, we've got a list in there, um, and you can follow along with block section two in your package there. And I guess we can begin with probably 111 Jordan. No, that's not, that's not correct. Yes, 111 Jordan, which contains two single-family dwellings on the property. Uh, and circa dates were 1900 to 1955.
Hold on a second. Keep going. Oh, section two, okay. Can you, can you follow along here, 111? Okay, thank you.
So, the index that was created identifies the years. Now, once again, 1900 might not be accurate, but the information that I have off tax map indicates that the structure was built in 1900.
Probably in addition in 1955 or re-
Could have been. Well, actually, to another house, because there's two properties, um, not, not, uh, there's two single-family dwellings on 111 Jordan Avenue.
And same thing on 132 also, right?
It is. You have two single-family dwellings, yes.
Uh, is it like a duplex?
No, it's two single-family homes.
Okay.
Maybe our people are, it's not up to date. It just looks like one on here is all, you know?
No, it looks like one roof.
No. Yeah, here's your red line for the first house. There's your additional house.
Oh, in the back, okay.
And 113 Jordan's the same. You've got one in the back of the, one in the back of the property.
Right. So, these two homes right here, do we know when they were built, or you didn't pull those?
Which one?
The two that we left out?
Um, they're, they're newer. Uh, I, I don't know. I didn't pull those, no ma'am. They're not gonna be on that list. Uh, and then, of course, 113 Jordan having two single-family dwellings, both of those have been identified as 1945 and 1950. Uh, and then you go down to the next property on Jordan, which is a single-family dwelling, just one residence. Uh, it, uh, dated 1925. And then, of course, 119 Jordan, which is another single-family, dated 1974. So, you got a range from early 1900s all the way to 1974 in that section.
You recommend including these two houses in block two, so it, so we're not spot zoning and it's cleaner.
Well, we're not zoning. Well, that's the difference. I mean, legally, we're not zoning, but to me, it just, to me, it would look better.
Well, that's totally the board's decision. I mean, I, I can do whatever. Uh, it's totally the board's decision.
I hate to, you've worked so hard on these, I really hate it.
I mean, that's changing one map. That's not a big deal, adding two properties. So, I mean, if that's something that the board wishes to do, then, you know, we, we can do that.
If we include, we never have to answer the question why.
Okay. Yeah. Habitat and Humanity built those homes.
I know, those are the ones, okay.
That's, that's maybe the reason they wouldn't include it to begin with.
I actually worked on those homes. So, now I know where you are. Um...
So, they're built in, um, I think those came about, probably about 1997, 98?
Nineties.
Oh, then maybe it, maybe it was a different one I worked on.
Or it might have been just a little bit earlier, but it was in, I, I wanna say the records, 'cause I remember Ms. Baker's house, and that's one of those homes, built by Habitat, and it was early 1990s, mid-1990s.
So, why would we wanna include those in our historic area?
Well, you're gonna have, you're gonna have homes not in the historic district. I mean, that aren't historic in the, in the historic overlay.
Yeah, so why would you wanna include that?
For future, future as well, you know?
Was it 1998? Yeah, so one of them was built in 1998.
And we're, and in residential area, you can always relax and pick those up if we think it's necessary, but...
Hey, you could.
I mean, it's, I mean, that's...
I think it's probably easier to just go ahead and include them.
To me, it looks, it looks like there's a reason that we left those two out, 'cause 119 Jordan Avenue isn't historic either.
I'm okay with including those.
Yeah.
I just don't see, you know, I don't know if these people are gonna come and say, "Why did y'all leave us out?" But, you know, if we, if we go ahead and include them, we'll eliminate that possibility, I assume.
Now, on the flip side of the coin, you could have those people come and say, "We don't wanna be included in this historic district. We don't believe our homes are historic, and they don't have any historic picture."
Yeah, but they don't-
To them.
That's not, that's not a qualification for being in a historic district.
Historic overlay. I mean, you do have to have a public hearing once this is adopted, so public input is gonna be there.
Your house doesn't have to be historic to be in a his, in a historic district.
I understand. It can be conforming and non-conforming to the district, yes.
But it's always nice if they are.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think-
Make changes in the future.
I think, I think making your overlay, I think making, making, making the overlay, I think we need to keep in mind that, um, uh, and, and once again, it's the board's decision completely. I can add those. That's not a, that's not an issue. But I think we need to keep in mind, um, the more we add, then that's more non-conforming structures that we have to an historic district that really have no historic significance to that area, um, which, um, then brings in non-conforming statutes, then brings in, um, um, you know, the different, the different parts of the, the historic overlay. I guess my question to the board was, would be, do these in particular, matter of fact, any of these properties, do any of these properties, these two in particular, right now since we're on section two, have significant factors to this district?
No, but if-
And we want them to in the future.
But if somebody tore those two homes down, they could build whatever they wanted to.
But, but would it, would it take away from the historic district?
Could.
Okay. That, that's, that, that would be the question you have to, y'all have to decide, as far as the commission goes. Would that take away from the overall historic district?
And I, it could. That's one reason why we have this commission.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Just to remain, you know, coming from a DC area, I see some wild things being built.
Most certainly.
Just don't fit.
Most certainly, yeah, and I completely understand.
I mean, not that we're trying to, you know, be hard on the folks, but if, you know, yeah, that doesn't look like Mount Pleasant. We need to tone that down a little bit.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm from saying some stuff.
I'm in agreement, but, uh, I think really, if y'all want me to add that part, um, maybe we need to get everybody's input, I guess. So, I don't know if that, uh, just a suggestion from the board as a whole, but I still think everybody needs to, uh, put in, to whether it's agreeable or not agreeable to add that at this point in time, I guess.
For, you mean, people that aren't here?
No, no, I'm, I'm fine with adding.
Oh, okay.
I'm fine with that, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm really, for some of these people that's really opposed to government overreach, I don't know pretty what that benefits the historic district, and I, I thought our whole objective here was to basically include the commercial district, and we seem to be expanding that a little bit, so I don't know. I mean, we're, we could-
Well, basically, our, what we're here for is to pick out a section that we want to keep the integrity of the historic district.
Totally understand that.
And so, I, to me, it just, I don't know. I, it's not that big a deal, but-
We either, we can include them, it's fine with me.
I think, I think, because we, we haven't made a, we haven't established overlays, so to include them's not a big deal. Uh, once we get to that point, to where we're actually ready to take something to the commission, then we need to be 100% where we're at.
Well, and I just think your argument, like, if somebody, if somebody came, say, 119 came to us, and they said, "Well, you know, we're not historic." And we said, "We understand that, but you're in the historic district," and, I mean, their guidelines aren't gonna be the same guidelines as, um, as the historic homes. But, and then they say, "Well, how do those two houses aren't in it? How did, why should we leave those houses? What did they, you know, how do you, did they give you something to leave them out?"
Yeah.
So, they're not in-
Well, I think Robert would be willing to change that map for us.
Yeah.
If you do that, we got a whole lot of trouble, Robert.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not an issue at all.
Thank you for these. These are great.
Not, not an issue at all.
I'm in agreement to include those two in block two.
I just think now's the time to do it if we're gonna do it.
Yeah. I think, right now, we actually got pretty hard lines here, so what we, what I change after this meeting, I would like to, at the next meeting, say, "Hey, ready to vote on it? Let's, let's get this on out." So, uh, I, I noted to myself there to add those, and it's not a big deal, really. So, uh, it'll be just completing out that line and making them out. That's not an issue. So, we'll do that right there on section two. Uh, any more questions, discussions about section two, any of the buildings that we have here? Is everybody familiar with what these buildings are, right now, currently? Okay.
The Shirt Factory, is that what you're talking about?
Well, any, any of the, but, uh, did y'all have any questions about, you know, what they're currently, currently used as or are right now? And if y'all do, in any of these sections, just let's, we talk about it. Um, we'll go to section three here. If I can get this thing to move. There we went. All right, section three. That gets kind of a little, I mean, this is a larger area here, so... You know, I've got y'all some out, but is there any specific areas that y'all wanna look at, um, that, you know, may, may need to be blown up? Just let me out. Um, so basically, this covers, um, this is, this is block section, um, one. This is block section two. So, we'll move on to block section three, which starts at Halon, and then, uh, it extends all the way, just past First Avenue, to the far side. This being, this is Tarr Shop. So, uh, it goes a good distance out. It's, uh, that's one of our, that's one of the larger zones there, so, um...
And it doesn't include, it does not include the trailer park, correct?
That's correct, no ma'am, it does not.
But it does include the, um, the power system block.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If you'll, uh, this is the power system block right here.
And the library.
Uh, that is correct, yes, ma'am, like that. It's on the corner right there. And of course, some of these have, uh, or some of these down here on Halon are actually nationally recognized on historic registry. The cool thing about the Google that I did this with, I still got it all in Google, and, um, if I can put it together at, I can actually run like a loop, and each one of these little tags right there, I can click on it and pull up a picture of what the, uh, building is. So, I'm trying to figure out how to use that, but, um, like I said, I've got them all saved in Google, and I've got pictures, photos attached to all of them. So, uh, hopefully, I can get that for the next meeting, and that way, kinda go through the show and just pop the pictures, see if I ask any questions about any particular buildings. But, uh, yeah, that, that's a pretty inclusive area right there. That's one of our bigger ones. And of course, that is section three. And see, this is the trailer park back here. Any discussion there? Any properties in there?
How far do we go past the First Avenue Red Light?
The tire shop and the vacant lot where the house was.
That's correct, yes. Which actually, on that section, okay, on, uh, that section right there, uh, we also have a, uh, I think there's a Main Street, there's some houses on, on a, on a North Main Street, right?
There is, there's a North Main Street Historical District.
Yeah, so, and I think that actually probably falls from that there, or not?
No, it's not on there.
No, it's not, okay, okay, okay.
I'm pretty sure it's not on there. I think the, the Main Street one starts down further.
Starts down further.
I think it starts about where Mr. Good used to live, somewhere in that, that area, right in there.
Like, two houses down from that, that place.
But, of course, right now, the, like, uh, Mr. Dotson indicated that, that house up there is torn out, it's a vacant lot. The last conversation I had with that owner of that property now, he acquired it.
What's that then?
Lives right next door to it. I can't remember the other side.
Oh, really? Oh, it's the, the-
Uh, he's a, like, older gentleman, but he might be retired or something. Got all the vehicles in the back, yeah.
He acquired that piece of property there. He told me that, uh, his plans was not to build anything. He just wanted it because the lot was right beside his. Uh, and he wanted it-
That's the guy that owns it?
Mr. Boshiers?
No, he, he-
Is it Boshiers?
Boshiers.
Oh, it's Boshiers. Jason, Jason Boshiers.
Mm-hmm, it's right next to him, and he's the one that purchased the property. He did, he did.
So, it's not for sale, he's just gonna leave it, like?
Uh, yes, sir. He just wanted to raise the, uh, house that was there, um, take that off, and from the conversation I had, he never wanted to build anything. He just wanted it as a piece, as a property. So, you know, he might-
And that's the same piece of property that had the gas station there, whatever that-
That's across the street.
Across the street?
That's across the street.
Oh, that's right. Well, I was thinking about that one, you know, they tore down that one across the street.
You're talking about the one next to the gas station?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, is that all part of one now, where that gas station used to be? Remember, there's a lot?
Mm-hmm. It has, it, um, he still has to go through the survey process. He still has to go through the survey process to combine those lots?
Oh, okay.
And that's been, right?
That is been. And, and, and he's actually, uh, that, there, it's located in, I think, section four, actually. Uh, so if we go to section four, I'm sorry. There we go, section four. Okay, so, yeah, 306.
306 Main Street. It's getting grainy.
It is getting grainy, 'cause it's a picture. So, uh, yeah, 306 and 302. So, the gas station used to be situated right here, and then the house used to be situated right here. So, uh, his, uh, I, I guess his thinking is to combine both.
But it, it's a commercial property?
It is now zone commercial. That's correct, yes. Both of those.
Oh, okay.
The, the gas station, it, it was already commercial, and in the house, uh, where the house was. Uh, he successfully brought that to planning commission for a refund, so, um...
Do you know what he's planning on doing with it, another sort of, or?
Uh, I don't. I know he's marketing it to, um, I, I, I know one of his, I guess, thoughts were to market it to a commercial restaurant.
I heard a Taco Bell.
I heard that too.
Well, see, Taco Bell approached him a long time ago, and, about the gas station, actually. And, um, they couldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't go forward with the deal because the lot was too small. And they told him, you know, if he had that piece of property, of course, that was years ago, they told him if he had that piece of property, it'd be more advantageous for a commercial restaurant type establishments to be there. So, he acquired the piece of property, and I guess he's moving forward, probably marketing in that direction, I would think.
We include that in our zone, does that affect their development at all? We include those two lots?
It will. The guidelines will, yes, sir.
If we have guidelines, we start to, right, yeah.
So, you could, so, so, I, I just, I, they just want me to put it to you, okay, so if you, you know what?
I prefer to have a windy side.
But you know, okay, say, take Taco Bell, for instance. Taco Bell, you know what it looks like in Columbia?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
Um, and it's been upgraded, but that was through Taco Bell doing, and that wasn't because the city had an historic area there. Now, you take a place like Brentwood or, um, Bellmead, they're Taco Bells. They're a little bit different looking, right?
Because they fit the-
They fit the, the criteria of, and I don't know if they are specifically in a designated area for historic, but I would almost venture to guess that they are, because the design is different. The design of the building in itself.
See, definitely guidelines, yeah, at what it's doing.
Yeah, most of the words are still not, yeah.
And to their, um, high, high line sign, I think, or no?
So, I mean, there's, there's, you know, the criteria will affect any type of new operation that was to come in there.
If we had those guidelines.
If we had those guidelines in place, that's correct.
But, well, okay.
Without those guidelines, of course, you have nothing. They come in here with a Taco Bell, which is like a Taco Bell.
Or keep it where it looks like and put a Taco Bell sign on it.
Yeah. I mean, they, they, they could, and, uh, but the, uh, the historic guidelines would take precedence over, uh, not necessarily, I mean, they would certainly design, uh, guide the design of that building. So, uh, we do know that that market's available, uh, and, um, from the last conversation that I had. So, to include that in the story, I think is, to be honest with you, is beneficial, uh, because we have, you know, if we have the guidelines in place, I think we have a little more control over, you know, something that can go up there, so, um... The, um, there was, you know, some churches, uh, there, there's a church down there directly behind what it used to be, right here. Uh, I think that's a church, it's identified as a church, um, and-
Are the funeral homes inclu, included in that? Isn't there a funeral home down there?
There is, and it's included.
Okay.
That's Chambers, down in Columbia.
Okay.
Yeah, it is included, yes, ma'am. So, that's block section four right there. So, we've got the pizza place, we've got North Main Church of Christ, our Main Street Church of Christ, we've got Dodgers Auto Repair. We've got several commercial entities there, um, all the way down to our downtown area. And we've got maybe, just looking at this, it appears like we've got one, two, three, four, five, six. Looks like maybe six, seven, six, seven, eight properties residential in that section. So, that's section four. Go on to section five, and this is the new section that was added. Basically blocked it off and-
Yeah, I think we can do that, Robert.
There it is, I'm sorry, block five. Apologize, went the wrong direction. So, basically turned up this square. Um, we included all the houses that were not included in section four on Howard Street, included those, uh, in here.
There's some gray houses down in there.
Mm-hmm, there is. And then, of course, down in Columbia, um, all the way incorporates the entirety of Broadway on both sides. Two included, all the way down to, um, down here.
Um, the old Star Construction Building?
Star Construction Building, yeah. Star Construction in their area right in here, they have their storage and stuff. This is three garages that are down around the corner of Columbia and Broadway. The church here is included, as well as all of these properties down there here, on both sides of Broadway there. So, that was five there. And I've got one more, unless y'all have any questions here. Think I've got one more.
Oh, is that it?
No. I've got historic properties in the downtown overlay. It should be a handout as well. These are identified on the national registry. That's the reason I just identified them, they're a mouthful.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So, they are, uh, also included in the street index, and, um, in particular, I would like some discussion, I mean, what I found out is, is based off, you know, what I found. Uh, did y'all see anything on the historic portion of the index? Uh, did y'all see anything on the historic portion of the index? Is it, could you use some further research? And of course, in the red, it identifies what I found them to be in the past.
I wouldn't have to. Um, the, do, do you just have the contributing on here?
I have every historic that's in the, that's in the registry.
Okay, so you did not put the non-contributing buildings in there, am I correct?
No. These are all just going to be your historic properties that are actually on the registry. That have, have identifiers that are actually on the registry.
Okay, um, I don't want to muddy the waters here, but you know that there's some buildings, that was done in 1984. So there's some buildings that in, that weren't contributing that would now be considered historical. So I don't know if we have to apply to have those buildings considered historical or not.
We would, we would.
But, um, that's just something that, you know, at the back of our minds, that there's some that, that-
Oh, yeah, most certainly, most certainly. I, I, I totally agree with, with what you're saying, and I knew that to be the case, that, um, I think, what I've done is I've sent this stuff to Sarah Elizabeth McLeod, uh, who works at South Central.
She's a great tart for ours, Terme and stuff.
Yeah, she's a stand-in for, um, Ms. Catan, uh, right now, while, uh, Ms. Catan is on maternity leave, but, um, she hasn't given me any input, uh, back in reference to this. But she is aware of non-conforming structures that would be now contributing to the historic character of the downtown area. But I think it, I think just getting a base of where we're at with the survey, and then, you know, any other buildings that we, um, um, may believe have historic significance, that we'll probably have to make, have to check out. Um, I don't know if we actually have to, I guess you would. Uh, so, yeah, I, we'd have to have a further discussion with them, I think, on that.
Yeah, I know, we, we go around that.
Yeah, so, um, you know, once she gives me some feedback from, um, all this center, uh, maybe then her can sit down for coffee or something and just kind of go over. Um, you know, have to do that, talk about that.
I just have a question. Is that the lot next to Ripley's, that vacant lot, is that privately owned or city-owned?
Privately.
Privately, that's correct.
Tim Barryer owned it.
Owns that lot and, uh, all the way back to Font, uh-
Font Street. Okay, so that whole?
That whole area, yes, sir. But, um, when I sent this to Ms. McLeod, I think, she'll probably use this list to probably verify she where we're at, but, um, that was only the historic properties that are identified currently. We've got several, actually. I mean, there's, there's quite a few. Still got them in there. But I think, um, the addition of those two properties that we discussed, I gotta go back now. Addition of those two properties that we discussed.
Lot two.
Yeah. I'll add those, and that'll be the only in the map that y'all get. Uh, but I will, I will have them out and a new index with those two properties inserted as well. Uh, and I think, you know, if everybody is, everybody that's present, and I know we're missing a couple, and there might be questions, but for everybody that's present, what does the commission think about the area in which we now have? Are we pretty concrete with those boundary lines at this point?
Yeah, I don't think we want to go any larger.
Okay.
And, uh, I think we're good with that.
Okay. All right, well then I'll add these two, like I said, and, uh, have that updated map along with the index. And then hopefully I'll hear back from Mr. McLeod prior to our next meeting. Maybe she can even come visit and talk to the board just a little bit.
Okay. So what do you see the next steps as, you know, I know we need to get the overlay in place and then start working on guidelines for commercial and residential?
We have a, the commercial guidelines to start, a draft to start with. Um, I put those together. Um, Ollie Happy looked at, in, those came from Collierville. Um, had to pick and choose which matched our buildings, because they had some buildings that didn't match our buildings.
Mm-hmm.
we can put together, I'll, I'll look at their, their residential in their commercial district and see what, how they handled that.
Differentiate.
And see, um-
And Mr. McLeod might have some ideas to what's actually wrong.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that'd be great.
Um, she might have some ideas to help us out with that, too.
I'd rather her do it.
Uh, well, I mean, I, I, uh, um, so as far as, um, are we, are we kind of finished? Do we want to move on, or do we need to discuss anything further here, uh, in relation to what you've been presenting tonight?
I think that's good.
Okay, okay. So I'll have the updated version of the map and then the updated index, and I'll bring that back, and hopefully I can have it on Google and we can see a little slideshow of the pictures, um, which would be pretty neat, so. And maybe Ms. McLeod, you know, is available to, uh, maybe even come for our meeting at our next meeting, so that would be good, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, and can she do like next steps? Can she walk us through the next steps on what we-
Yeah, you know, I, I'm pretty sure I handed them to everybody, um, early on, and you might not have them with you tonight, but I had sent out a, uh, I've got it in my book here real quick. I sent out basically, uh, this right here, and I got that from Ms. Catan.
Okay, well, that's who that came from?
It did, yes, ma'am. Yeah, I, I didn't create this, she sent it to me, and that's why I distribute it back out to the board. Um, so, these are the suggested steps we follow, uh, per their recommendations, so. Um, I think if we kind of stay with this timeline right here, we're moving in the right direction. Some of these we've already done, and we're on the process right now of establishing that history. So if we're good to move past this, the only other thing I have, Chairman, if you don't mind, or however you want to do it, the only other thing I have is the, uh, admission of the updated bylaws.
Updated bylaws.
Yeah.
Or we just changed the time?
Where we just changed the time. Uh, so, we did vote on that at the last meeting, and that was approved. Uh, all I did was make the notation to show the difference in the bylaws. And actually, before you leave tonight, I need to get you to sign these right here, so I've got them on board. But, um, um, five o'clock, um, I think is working for everybody, and I think it is a little more beneficial than waiting till six and coming up here and down. So, um, do y'all have any questions or anything? Anything that y'all want me to be doing that I'm not doing?
Do we need to vote on them?
On the-
Updated by law?
We voted in the last meeting. All I did was make the change, make the correction, yeah. That's all I did, was make the necessary change. And y'all got, and the copy that you got right there, I don't know if y'all have a folder that y'all are keeping your stuff in at the house, but the copy of the bylaws that you have are the corrected version.
So, any visits?
None. I'll make the motion that we adjourned.
I can assist.
We have a motion, uh, here, deleted from Don, John, Doc, and I got you. Hang on a second, the motion from the kind of, uh, in seat.
Good job.
Call in favor?
Very good.
Thanks, Robert.
Yes, sir.
You always, you always do good work.
Well, I appreciate it. I do appreciate it.
I'm just, uh, running down here to make a walk.
There you go, I know, I knew you were taking that. I know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't even weigh on it, but I'm, you know, I'll go with you proud, but I just voted that.
It's not really an issue to make those two properties and start adding much.
Exactly.
And it's, uh, it's pretty, pretty big. It's all right. It's all right, we got a good working.
There you go, it's good, yes.
Uh, actually, Kay and I got a barber.
Yeah, I'm getting it.
Thanks for having us.
First month I've had a barber like that.
They actually worked up our first effort. I mean, it's like, you know, it just requires some really accurate measurements.
So, yeah. Have a good evening.
Go after it. And it took two of us.
Bye, Mr. Reese.
Good day there. I need to work that really good. Well, good. So, yeah, we're, we're getting very close to getting that one ready. You know, it's seven months into that project.
That's a lot.
And it's, uh, you know, you try to get a dry ball guy, naturally make you a month.